Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Rock on.
Good and loud.
So, good evening.
Welcome to the Grand Rapids Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, September 17th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice.
Present.
Russ?
Present.
Slade?
Present.
Baker?
Present.
Now?
Present.
Eaton? Present. Hoskins?
Actually back there.
O'Connor?
Present.
President Lanier?
Present.
Nine are present. We have an agenda before us. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda is written.
Support?
No support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Great, we have an agenda and I will turn it over to you, Madam Superintendent, for celebrations.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to ask GE Aviation to come forward for our celebration.
Thank you. Ken is going to introduce our guest.
Superintendent Neal, President Lanier, and board members, I want to introduce some representatives of GE Aviation from our right, George Kiefer, Natalie McMullin, and David Johnson. Again, this summer GE sent a significant group of volunteers to work at our schools. They brought 186 volunteers, worked at five sites, and also brought an $8,700 grant to buy materials. So, we wanted to recognize and acknowledge their efforts in the effort to help our schools. Go ahead.
Sure.
Sorry?
It was a good start. Thank you for the acknowledgement. From a volunteering standpoint, part of the GE culture is to volunteer and contribute back to our communities. And part of what we're going to do tonight is just quickly walk you through some of the different ways in which we're helping out from an education standpoint, health and welfare standpoint. So Natalie is the one that actually did the coordination for all of the activities for the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and then Dave leads our overall volunteer efforts. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave just to make a couple of quick comments here on what we do.
Thank you very much, and we're humbled and honored to be here tonight, and we're also humbled and honored to be able to be part of the GE legacy and be able to represent GE and GE volunteers and what GE does in the community. So I have a quick PowerPoint here. It's not too long, but I think it contains important information about GE volunteers that will help you understand what we do globally. The mission of GE volunteers is really to enable and empower our employees to volunteer in their community and to really bring the resources of the GE company to bear on the issues that our communities are facing. We focus on opportunities from a health, education, environment, and then also community development standpoint. You can see here that we recognize it's not only good for the community, but it's also good for the individuals.
That are doing the volunteering.
It makes them better employees, and it's really good for our company. It gives us, it provides us with-
With better leaders that are well-rounded and-
And accountable and inclusive. You can see here some fact sheets, a fact sheet from last year. In 2011, we had over, almost a million and a half volunteer hours all around the world. You can see the amount of volunteering that we did, that we were able to do, and then also able to support those volunteer hours with some funding.
Great thing about GE volunteers is that the corporation really wants to make sure that the money follows the hours.
And so, the focus is on volunteering, you know, the hands-on sweat equity, and then the money is a resource.
To help enable that.
And here in Grand Rapids, you may have seen the news a few months ago, the foundation allocated $750,000 to-
Support the Cherry Street Health Centers.
-here in Grand Rapids. And of course, that will be coupled with some-
Sweat equity, some volunteering hours. And also, it brings the skillset of the GE employees with some improvement activities and some other things. To bear on those projects.
You can see our site in Grand Rapids, you know, George provides the leadership-
And Natalie-
...provides a great source of volunteering.
She leads the volunteering efforts from our Early Career Professionals Organization.
They're a big source of volunteering, and it's a great thing to see them-
Starting off their career, focused on helping the community.
You can see our numbers, since we have become a part of GE, have skyrocketed. We're hoping to keep that going straight up and not leveling off, but 17,000 volunteer hours were projected here in 2012. So, I really, it really is a demonstration of our commitment to this local community. One of the ways in which we do this and make sure that we are holistic in our approach is-
Through our affinity networks.
This is an example of one of those networks and just the way in which their focus on the community is the community at large. And so they have a holistic approach that does include volunteering, as you see up in the upper right-hand corner, but it also includes other things that can benefit our employees and benefit the community and support the community. So, again, we really thank you for the opportunity to come tonight, to share a little bit about what GE volunteers is, and do you have any questions for us?
I saw the robotics on there. Are you, any chance involved at our schools with a robotics program?
We are right now involved with a school in Kentwood, East Kentwood. We're involved with West Michigan Aviation Academy, Wyoming Schools, and also West Catholic are the schools that we sponsor for robotics right now.
Okay. Are we on the docket? It'd be fantastic.
Yeah, we would love to find ways in which that we can cooperate with the GRPS beyond just, you know, the stuff that we're doing right now. So, yeah, we got to get in the classroom. We are partnering with Southwest Community Campus. Our Hispanic form has adopted that campus, and we do mentoring there regularly, and we're going to be doing JA there throughout the school year this year. So those are some things that we started that directly impact the-
Fantastic. Thanks.
Anyone else? Reverend Hoskins?
Just thanks for your donation and your time. I have a brother, actually, that works for GE down in Texas, so I know it's a good company. He's been with them for 20-plus years, engineer, but now in sales, so thanks for all you do.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thanks for being with us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Did Natalie want to add anything? Great, thank you.
Hey, George.
One card.
Dave, give me a card.
Have any cards for Agenda Item Public Comment? This one is a non-agenda item. If there are any public comments on agenda items, please hold those cards up and we'll collect them. You're being done. We'll go to the reports. Did you report?
Mm-hmm.
Secretary's report.
The board has purchased a table for the 46th Annual Fight for Freedom Banquet of Greater Grand Rapids Branch of the NAACP to be held on Friday, October 12th, at New Hope Baptist Church at 6:30 PM. Mr. Hillary Shelton, Director of the NAACP Washington Bureau, will be speaking on the theme "Together, One Dream." If you're interested, contact the BOE assistant before, no later than October 1st. There are five tickets available.
Madam Superintendent, your reports.
I would like to ask for Kelly Dean, Don Cinkie, Dean Transportation. I'd like to ask them to come forward. I thought it important for Kelly and his crew to come and talk about the process. They're really doing a lot of really neat things in transportation, and so often we hear about the negative things that's happening. So I thought it was really, it would be a nice thing for the public to hear some of the great things that we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Good evening.
President, thank you, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. I have to my immediate right, your left, is Don Cinkie. That is a career transportation supervisor, over 30 years here in the Greater Grand Lance, Greater Grand Rapids area, and I'll let him describe in a second. Brian Thrasher is my Chief Financial Officer for Dean Transportation. He's been with me over 20 years, and so we're really fortunate, two great folks here. Myself, just because several of you have not had a chance to meet personally, I'm a teacher by trade, I'm a school principal, Michigan State trained, I worked for the Lansing Public Schools for over 15 years. Prior to that, grew up in the city of Pontiac. I'm an urban kid, and we're very honored to be here, now into our seventh year servicing the Grand Rapids Public Schools. So we appreciate it very much. Thank you, Superintendent, for the opportunity. Just to kind of give you an update, any questions that you may have of us? If you're wondering, when we started this operation, there were nearly 160, 65 buses or so. Well, we're presently operating the service at 134 vehicles. About half of those are regular ed, half are special education. Special education would be a combined contract with Canton Intermediate School District. And so we're very, very honored to be a part of both the operations. We've been here in Grand Rapids servicing the Canton Intermediate School District since 1999. As a business, I want to just be sure that you and the community know that we've been around for 50 years. I've been 27 years in school transportation, and I've been blessed to have the opportunity to be an educator first, and then get into the school transportation business. And so frankly, we treat our business as an educational support service, and we understand the great importance that we have for each and every student here that we transport for you each day. As a fleet of 135 buses, I'm proud to tell you this last year during our state police inspection process, we had, we've scored what is the state police would call in the excellent category. We had 130 buses that were inspected, and we only had one yellow and one red tag. That in our industry is good. And so we're proud to tell you that. That means that our fleet is very sound and safe. This year, we purchased 24 new buses that have been positioned here in Grand Rapids Public, and the average age of your fleet is just between about five and a half years old. In our world, that's good, too. That's a good fleet, good solid, so there's, when we look at a bus lasting up to 12 years, yours is about five and a half years, so that is really good. We shared with the superintendent and some others recently that what we've not told you is that every one of our vehicles is equipped with a GPS system. So it's GPS controls, called a ZONAR system. It's a nationally recognized opportunity that if you ask us at any minute where our buses would be, we can tell you that. We can tell you right to the foot what time they were at their locations, what time they were at their corner stops, and also, we can also track idling time, and idling time is important to us. I'm proud to tell you, as a company, we've been told by outsiders that we may have the greenest fleet in our industry. And so we have retrofitted all of our buses with a diesel oxidation converter, which re-burns all the diesel fuel. In an urban setting, we're very, very proud to do our very best in keeping our air appropriate for not only the community, but our students are on board also. Also, we've been very instrumental in developing a product called the Child Reminder System, CRS, we call it. And basically, the CRS system is electronic system that's on each and every one of our vehicles, which help us to assure that no sleeping child is left on board. In our industry, that is something that can happen and does happen across our industry. Knocking on wood, as I tell you, that's not happened here, because the driver has a responsibility to go to the back of the bus looking for children, to make sure that they didn't fall asleep, which we know they do, and make sure that they've gotten off the bus safely, but also book bags and other lost items that they're able to, to be able to take all their possessions with. If the driver fails to do this, it's basically a concept of a burglar alarm on a car. The lights, the lights flash, disorient sound, you know, it makes quite a spectacle, which means that the mandatory post-trip inspection was not completed on the vehicles. That must be done. Every time that driver turns that bus off and leaves to leave the vehicle, they have to do a mandatory post-trip inspection. We've also, in fact, when we were blessed to have the opportunity to come here to Grand Rapids, we found out very quickly that you had a system called Versatrans, which is the state-of-the-art routing systems. And we have since upgraded the system here, and we really believe that we may have the most efficient GPS courting online system to establish the routing processes on where kids should be picked up, dropped off, and get to our school programs. And so, we've been very pleased with the great opportunity, because Grand Rapids was ahead of this, they had this opportunity, and they actually have the ability to provide student data from multiple locations across the district to our routing program. We have, it takes us three to four individuals to route the number of students that we have. It's a major task to be able to keep track of all the data and all the students that are, we're providing service for. We have seven to eight different individuals that work in an office, who take phone calls and communicate by two-way radio to all the vehicles out within the community. Don is our main leader, oversees our operation. We also have a full-time person overseeing special ed of the total number of vehicles that we have. There's approximately 70 or so that are special ed and 60 that are regular ed servicing the district. So, you know, the breakout is in that, in that fashion. We have been doing some other areas that we feel that are pretty creative. Just to conclude, is that we have, we believe that we have over 100 hours of training for our regular education drivers, including what the state provides, but a good number of that is our own commitment. And upwards of 200 hours in training for our drivers that are, that provide special education training. That's really been our hallmark of what we, what we have done this past summer. For example, all drivers are brought in and they've been involved in an advanced driving program, the review policies and procedures and safety procedures. And this last year, what we actually did was roll a bus on its side, something that we know can happen, but we, drivers needed to have the opportunity to really see what the reality is when you are involved in an accident of that magnitude. Every other year, we also will fill a bus with theatrical smoke, so that everyone has to learn how to evacuate a vehicle without being able to see around you, as if there was truly a fire, an emergency. And so, we think exercises like this are above and beyond, and we believe that it's just a great way to always prepare all of our staff in the areas of emergencies, hopefully to prevent them from happening. We have a good workforce, we have a very good workforce. We have a good working relationship with GRESPA, and we've, again, we are in our second five-year contract, in our second year of our second five-year contract, and we've been very, very pleased with not only technologies that we've been able to bring onboard, but also the stability of the employees that we've had in our workforce.
Anything else you'd like to add before we open it up for questions?
I'd like to say that I've been in the business, I did work for Kennel Hills Public Schools as a transportation director for 25 years before I joined with Kelly Dean, and now I'm starting my eighth year with Kelly Dean.
Brian?
Yeah, just as Kelly alluded to, I'm fortunate to work with Kelly now for over 20 years, obviously with our focus in school bus transportation, as Kelly alluded to, relationship with KI SD going back over 10 years now, and then obviously more recently with the, with Grand Rapids Public for the last seven years. And I think from our perspective, as Kelly had shared, we have really tried to make sure that we're doing everything day in and day out that we can to make sure that we've got up-to-date technologies, up-to-date processes and procedures, and work with, just, we've welcomed the opportunity, enjoyed the opportunity we've been given to work with, work with the staff here, to make sure that what we're doing each and every day meets not just the needs, but hopefully exceeds the expectations of the district, so.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have one question.
Reverend Hoskins?
Kelly, you talked about that CRS system. Is every, I may have missed it, but is every vehicle equipped with that, and how long have they been equipped?
Reverend, great question, in that we made a commitment over seven years ago, approximately seven years ago, and we retrofit at that time all of our vehicles. In our fleet right now, we have a little over 1,000 buses total, and it's just a commitment to make sure. So every, the Grand Rapids buses have had them on for five to seven years. Yes.
Well, we've had a few issues lately. I know you come with the positive, but just, that's going to come out, so, I mean, it has come out, so just, that's why I asked the question, because we have had some issues here lately, locally.
And we understand that, and thank you. I would just ask for your continued commitment, Dean, because we are committed here to the district. We have been reviewing all of our regular policies and procedures, particularly for the drop-off of students at community stops. And we had a problem on the first day of school, and frankly, we have been working with the superintendent and Brian Gamm to review all of our elementary schools in particular. Our kindergarten's first graders are just held as truly a precious commodity, and that how we are continuing to identify them as, as being loaded on buses first at school, drivers have a chance to give them their seating assignments. We have checkoff sheets, check them on the bus, check them off the bus. And this particular day, there was a human error that was made, one of our staff, and that was the first day of school with a good, a large number of kids that rushed off at one bus stop. And so we made an error, we've owned up to it, but we've gone back and we've been reviewing all of our procedures. We think that our procedures are above and beyond what's out there in the world, and we're still looking at trying to be more technically sound to identify students as they get off and on the bus.
Mr. Dean, how would you like, I guess, questions to be handled regarding maybe time of a drop-off and things like that? I only ask because I can think of a couple instances, a couple families I know, knowing that I'm on the board, have said things to me about their bus usually drops off much later than it's scheduled to drop off, and they've suggested that maybe the route should be looked at differently, whatever the case. And I'm not a, you know, a logistics guy, so I hadn't really gone into that conversation with them, but I'm just curious if there are some concerns that people think are reoccurring with something like that, how would you best like to let that be known to you?
Thank you. That's a great question, and we want to have the best in communication, so I'd suggest you call and get right ahold of Don and his office, and he has staff there that, I mean, literally can look at the computer routing program and check on that, but when we know that, we can actually go out and check on the bus route. I mentioned our GPS system onboard. We know where every bus is at at all times, so we can, we can check on that. And we get through the, first weeks of school are challenging wherever we're at. We had over 2,400 changes in the first week of school. Imagine that, 2,400, and that's not unusual for school districts. Lansing, we serviced, they had, you know, they have thousands, so that's just about right for the number of kids in each of the two districts, but our populations are transient and moving, and so we have to keep up with that. We have a lot of late enrolers at our districts, and so the first few days, but once, once we get through that, we will fine-tune any of those challenges that parents have.
I would just, I would like to add that Loretta English is our point person for transportation in the district, and so questions really should go through Loretta, because we keep track of that.
Student services.
Right, and Title I, Loretta's there, Ray Trahan Loretta. The other, the other piece I think is important is to know for families, we need the correct address. That's really important in order for us to route the buses in a timely fashion. We have to have the information that is correct and accurate and most up-to-date. It's very important.
Any other questions?
I would like to, may I say one other thing on behalf of our staff, because we, as I mentioned, our full-staff, we have a group, and many of them are transition drivers that worked at Grand Rapids before, and a few others that have been out in the community performing with Buster the Bus, and I hope you appreciate it, because it's representing Grand Rapids Public Schools extremely well. Dean's very proud of this, and they went out to multiple locations throughout the summer, community investments in the park, Rand in the Park, community churches, and just put on bus safety programs, and they, they're volunteers, and they're just so willing and able to go out and just to talk about bus safety, so been very pleased. And I'd remissly say, we have four buses this Saturday. We're going to transport a couple hundred Grand Rapids public elementary students to Michigan State University. They're going to come have campus tour, as well as attend the Eastern Michigan football game on Saturday. And we're donating the buses we have for several years, working with the West Michigan MSU Alumni Club. So we're looking forward to that on Saturday.
Tell them to cheer for Garrett Hoskins, he tied in first. Eastern Michigan. I'm just putting it out there.
We need to have a U of M, Miss Word.
Garrett Hoskins.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, just one thing, I just want to compliment Mr. Sink. We had to do some spur of the moment contract on him with my Upper Bound Program at GRCC, and just wanted to let you know, he did a really fine job of working on the fly with us this summer, and just really appreciated your efforts and helped us put things together. That's all.
Good deal.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for being here. Great information.
Thank you so much. We want to be a partner with the district in every form or fashion, so if there's anything more, and we'll, we always want to be, want to be a team member. So thank you so much for having us here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have an update from Paul Baumgartner, and Amy, are you coming up? Paul, for an update on our food and nutrition service?
Thank you, Madam President.
Good evening.
Superintendent Neal, Amy Klinkowski is the coordinator for our department, assistant to me, and I'm happy to report this fall that we're rolling out our community eligibility program successfully and overwhelmingly. Very positive responses from the students and staff, with fruits and vegetables flying off the, literally flying off the shelves, not just in Grand Rapids, but in districts across West Michigan. The logistical challenges of keeping fruits and vegetables in stock now that that is a mandated serving has been a really interesting experience. We are, we have finished up our two-year pilot project with USDA on the Summer Eligibility Electronic Benefit Transfer Program, and we're very proud of the results. I'll be having a summary meeting next week, and we're very encouraged, and the feedback I've gotten from USDA is that the lessons learned from the Grand Rapids area hopefully will be spread out across the country and provide improvements in not only summer meal programming, but also in our SNAP benefit programs and our bridge cards, and making better use of our precious resources. So we're very proud of that participation. We've just finished up our two-year pilot program with Project FIT, where we partnered with Blue Cross Blue Shield and Michigan State University in a number of our buildings, where we took a comprehensive approach to childhood wellness and food choices from not only what takes place in the cafeteria, but also what takes place in the community and working with our local merchants. And so, there are some long, sustainable pieces of knowledge that were gained from that project, one of which was the Food Coach Program that we initiated with the help of Amy Klinkowski and her team, and also the, just basically the change in mindset in the community with merchants, local merchants, and not being afraid to promote fruits and vegetables and healthier food choices on the grocery shelves. Wealthy Street Market is a perfect example of some of the changes that were a direct result of that program that we implemented along with MSU. Lastly, I'd like to point out that we were one of two school districts in the state of Michigan that was recognized by USDA and had received a gold, the highest award, the Gold Distinction Award in the Healthy U.S. School Challenge Program. And that program was taken, had taken place at Ford Middle School, and the purpose of that program is to change the community, change the culture, one building at a time, with physical fitness, healthy eating choices, healthy lifestyle choices. And again, I have to give credit to Amy Klinkowski and all the work that she spearheaded with the Physical Education Department and the health, the school nurses.
The school nurse, Ann Lepick.
Yes, and couldn't have done it without them. And again, they provided a great example for other schools to take lessons learned and spread that mission out, so.
We hope for three more this year.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
So we're very proud of the efforts that we're taking and looking forward to a very successful school year.
Paul, can you also share a little bit about how we're working with other districts? Because we're doing quite a bit with other districts.
Oh, yeah. How'd I forget that? We rolled out six editions- We rolled out six additional school districts. We have entered into joint service agreements in the spirit of supporting our communities and providing examples of how support services can be shared and provide economies of scale. We started that program three years ago with, starting out with Immaculate Heart of Mary, and we took on East Grand Rapids and Grand Rapids Christian, and the program just took off from there. We're up to a total of fourteen non-GRPS programs that our department provides the nutritional services for, and again, it's, I'm really proud of the fact, it doesn't matter if it's a affluent district or a poor district, school meals make a difference, and school nutrition makes a difference, and so, we're very pleased to provide that support.
Good deal. Any questions?
Mr. Baumgartner, is GRPS the largest nutrition provider from a public education standpoint in the state?
We are the second largest behind Detroit Public Schools in terms of number of meals served, yes.
Are we, with our joint service agreements, do we service more outside districts as a public entity than other, any other district in the state?
We do, yes indeed, we're serving twenty-three thousand meals a day.
Getting your talking points.
Yes, absolutely, we're a major, major food provider in this community.
What was that, number twenty-three?
Twenty-three thousand meals daily.
Dr. Randles?
I had a question, I had watched the video that you had sent out, very nice, and I was wondering about the Food Coaches that wasn't a USDA program at all, it was something that came up with.
It's something that we came up collaboratively here. The biggest change in school meals in all the years that Amy and I have been providing meals is, is that change from just putting food out on the table. The important thing, we aren't interested in feeding trash cans and children, as we introduce more and more nutritionally dense foods and more and more challenging foods, foods that children haven't necessarily seen at home, just like our, as we raise our own children, we need to coach them. It takes multiple times to, to work with children to accept new, new foods. And so, we set up a program in our five Project FIT schools where we have the teachers actually participate in the school meal program, take the meal, sit down at the table with the children, and participate and model positive behavior. The power of adults eating the same foods that the children eat is incredible, and we've got documentation of reduction in plate waste, and what we have done over the years now is we have developed this, this core, volunteer core, Amy, if you want to speak on that, it'd be wonderful.
Well, it's our Healthy Eating Coaches, which really started with MSU Extension, and that was prior to the FIT project, and it was about, in fact, I talked to the science coordinator, this is what I was talking about earlier, with our Organ Wise Guys lessons. The kids are getting the education, so the cafeteria provides all the food for tasting and eating, so down goes the lentil soup and the cauliflower and kiwi, you know, just all the fruits and vegetables have better consumption. And to me, the real magic is watching the kids now talk to each other at mealtime and encourage each other to eat the broccoli cheese soup. So, that's the real magic with the language arts going on in our district, that they had this opportunity to talk and discuss with each other, they, they're little foodies, you know, sitting at the table, so, but that, that to me was the real magic, is when they started talking to each other in a very, you know, calm, relaxed, educated, education manner, so.
So, we welcome constantly, we're always seeking more volunteers to work in the buildings and enjoy a free school meal and enjoy it with the children and make a difference.
Any other questions, comments?
I, I wish we could have a direct study between our nutrition and our academic achievement, because there's, there's no question, and, you know, I don't, I'll let Monica talk to it, but in terms of cognitive development, in terms of performance, when the glycemic index doesn't shoot through, so it's just fantastic that we're leaders in this area.
Volunteers, who do they contact?
Amy, me.
Amy.
Go to their website and.
Okay. Could we just show up and eat?
Here's a training program.
GRPS.org, and you'll get us somewhere.
Look at the food nutrition, showing the GRP, and then, okay.
Paul, but also in servicing all these other districts, we still make money in there. Well, we do, it's not our primary goal. My primary goal is to make sure that we maintain financial integrity, and honestly, to demonstrate to other school districts the power that school meals can play in their own programs, and at the same time, support our own. We're a large district, but we have our own struggles, and to have a dynamic department like this, we need to be able to serve meals, and that's what we're about, and to be able to have the name Grand Rapids Public out in front, I think really means a lot. I love seeing our trucks going into every neighborhood.
I love your trucks, too.
Of the city.
Yeah.
But you're being modest, we still, we're not in a negative way.
Not, not at all. So, in fact, we are able to, we've driven millions of dollars into back in the district, renovating school cafeterias over the years. In fact, every building has been touched, and we just, if you haven't had a chance, go to Southwest Community Campus and look at the lovely transformation that took place in that basement, and working forward to opening up the Blanford Building in the, in December, January. So, we'll be, we'll, we'll be meeting again in November and making decisions for the thirteen, fourteen year.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I have one last quick report coming from Larry Johnson. I think there was a hint, Larry, one last quick report.
I know the routine. She said two minutes, I said a minute.
He's telling the truth.
Well, good evening, President Lanier, Superintendent Neal, and the remaining board members. Just as we, you know, get into our third week of school here, just very quickly, give you an update on what's going on in the world of safety and security. As you know, we opened up the schools very, very well, without a lot of challenges around safety and security. What we did with our staff this year is we tried to, the way we closed out the school year last year by extending our staff's hours and keeping them on to help kids get home, we started the year out this way, and it was tremendous help with some of the misplaced kids that we had to deal with. And what we did this year is we're going to, we extended our office hours this year because of the after-school programs and the buses that are running late in the evening, we wanted our transportation and parents to get a live voice whether than a recorder after five o'clock, so, so we now have someone manning our dispatch center till about eight o'clock every night before we go to an automated system. During the, the park celebration, we was very encouraged by the number of parents, over five hundred parents who came out and signed a bullying pledge and agreed to work with their students around, around bullying. We'll continue to take that message into the school as we get ready to put our team, teaching, educating, and mentoring program back into the building. As I've been traveling around the buildings this last couple of weeks, very encouraged by the large number, and Mr. Held can please congratulate all of his teachers, but the large number of teachers, particularly in our middle and high schools, who are standing in the hallways, greeting students in the morning, in between classes, they're coming out, they're in the lunchrooms, I mean, they're just all over the place, and you can really just see the culture change and the attitude change of some of our young people inside of the, inside of the buildings. As I was walking through Union High School this afternoon, I was just amazed that the building was so quiet and that kids were in class, teachers were teaching, they were on task within a couple minutes of the bell ring, and that's, that is so encouraging that our teachers are doing that, not that they didn't do it in the past, but it's just like all hands on deck, everybody's just pushing the components of a safe school and doing what it takes to, to create a healthy learning environment. Our, our staff will, again, will continue to do our, our monthly training, second Monday of, of every month at Hillcrest from ten till noon and from four to six, to accommodate those that, that work and want to come in the afternoon, and we'll continue to do our Principal's, Principal's Academy, working with new and incoming administrators on how to safely manage a building. And then, lastly, this Saturday, we worked with over twenty-five families this Saturday to help twenty-five young people who needed to be reinstated into school, they had been suspended for various reasons, suspended or expelled, so we worked with those families this Saturday out at Hillcrest to get them back on track and to get them re-enrolled in their, in the school, in their neighborhood area. So, we are, we're encouraged by that, that the young people are coming back, we'll continue to do the work necessary and stay as long as necessary to help not only maintain, but create this safe school, healthy environment, and that, and that takes not only the security department, we're just the icing on the cake. The real work is done by, by those teachers that's in the classroom on a daily basis, these administrators, and yourself, who, who makes it easy by setting policy and giving the superintendent the direction on which way this district should be going. So, thank you. If you have any questions, I'll take them, if not, my minute's up.
Any questions or comments? Dr. Foles?
I was waiting for Jane to hold the card up a minute ago. I just, the program at Hillcrest for reinstating students, is that a new program, or is that?
No, actually, we've been doing it for about four years now, but in the, the, this, this, we intentionally start calling some kids who were slow getting re-enrolled, they had met all the requirements to get reinstated, and we wanted to spend some time talking with those families, talking with those young people about appropriate behavior inside the building, the dress code, and just things that they got caught up in to get them suspended. What we want to do is not let that happen again.
Any other questions, comments? Dr. Randles?
I just want to clarify, did those students start at the beginning of the year, or we didn't make them start three weeks later?
They, some of them started at the beginning and then came in, some of them had already been enrolled, but then came to the class. There are a few that still have a couple more things that they need to do to meet the requirements of the original suspension, but we're working very hard with student services and those families to expedite it, to get them in school, so they don't miss a lot of class time.
One last thing, those other two things for staff, one was the new administrators' training, and what was the other?
The Principal's Academy.
Oh, okay.
And then, the, the other one was the, our second Monday training.
For who?
That's for, that's for everyone, we, it's several disciplines, it could be teachers, administrators, our maintenance staff. We, we change the topics every month to give everyone an opportunity to come in and get some type of a training around school safety and security.
Is it just for staff, or could parents or, you know, communities?
Parents, parents could attend. We have not, we have not put it out to parents, but we have had some parents attend, and surely you guys are all welcome to attend at any time as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice and brief.
Yeah. Okay, we have one action item, that's the Roosevelt lease. This was on our agenda a couple meetings ago. Need a motion on the floor so the weekend open.
Make a motion to approve the Roosevelt lease.
Support.
Any questions, comments?
Just make one that I'm, it's, I'm happy to see that the lease was made for, extended to the three-year term instead of the original one-year term.
Okay. Randles?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faub?
Yes.
Geetson, yes. Hoskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
President Lanier?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Now, we have the consent agenda grouping.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda less the purchasing items.
Support.
So, you amended?
What was that?
It was an amended.
Yep, motion to approve the consent agenda less the purchasing items.
And who said it?
Reverend Hoskins.
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faub?
Yes.
Geetson, yes. Hoskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
President Lanier?
Yes.
Now, we need a motion for the purchasing items.
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda.
Second.
Open for discussion.
Sorry, who said the second?
Dr. Randles.
Just one quick question about the permission to modify the blanket order for legal services for fifty thousand dollars to Clark Hill. I assume that is in relation, and when we, in the budget cycle, we had allocated two hundred thousand dollars to be for an in-house legal service, I assume that we haven't hired someone yet, that is why we're increasing this blanket order?
It is a couple things. One, we are finishing up a couple of issues that we have been working on, and we are in the process, I am interviewing someone tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow, either tomorrow or Wednesday.
Any other questions, comments on the purchasing items?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faub?
Yes.
Geetson, yes. Hoskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
President Lanier?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
For our discussion items, we have the MASB Fall Conference as well as the Education Trust Conference. There's information in your packets about both, so I don't know if we have to, let's kind of discuss them at the same time, because I think the last time we had the MASB Fall Conference on the agenda, and we wanted to kind of discuss that at the same time as the Education Trust. MASB's conference is in Detroit, and it's November eighth through the eleventh, and we also need to determine delegates for the MASB, and we have three available, should we decide to go to the MASB conference, so we must do that tonight as well. And then, the Education Trust Conference is November eighth through ninth, eighth, I guess, yeah, eighth, ninth, so, and that's in Washington DC. So, who wanted to discuss it, was it you, Monica, or was it you, Mo?
I had brought it up, yeah, last time, only because when I was at the MASB meeting last year, I saw Katie Haycock talk in conjunction with Holland Public Schools, and a lot of stuff, and then she did a program right after, that was in the early bird session, and she knows Grand Rapids well, she knows Michigan well, this whole bit about closing achievement gaps, I think is, is gonna be time well spent, and they're well informed when they give it, when they give it a talk. So, I just brought it up, I remembered last year, oh yeah, they went right after to DC, and so then I, I took a look, and, and so I think it is worthy of board members going or administrat, administrative staff going, because it really does hit right where we need to be.
I know in our, in our policies, we require to remain either in Michigan or in the region, so, you know, if we should decide that the district funds some board members, I assume we have to deal with that policy issue. I think MASB is a good way to entreat with the Education Trust.
Well, I guess I wanted.
I'm sorry, were you done?
That's fine.
In addition to, you know, having great respect for the organization and the work they're doing nationally regarding the achievement gap, the, the other speaker at the conference, Charles Payne, I have the deepest respect for, and his scholarship and his leadership and analysis of urban school reform and what's been effective and ineffective over time, so I would be thrilled to engage with him and hear what he has to say.
Would it be, I mean, it's, it sounds kind of intriguing to me if we actually had like a contingent that included board and staff going to a conference like that, which would be kind of interesting to get some ideas floating, and so, especially if like achievement gap strategies, you know, board members go and then come back and somehow have to, you know, communicate that to staff, it might be kind of a worthwhile experience to have that. And so, anyway, I think that, I think it's, I think it's worth at times, I mean, maybe we would have to change the policy, as Mos suggested, but I think it worth, if, if we, if it's something that's valuable, that's gonna help us do the district, the cost is worth it, and I'm, I mean, I'm imagining that there wouldn't be more than a couple board members that would want to go, and maybe a couple staff, that would be, I think it would be a great, you know, opportunity for, for our work, so.
Ms. Slade?
I think our budget, I think we read in our report that the budget was about nine thousand dollars, so it'd be a question of, you know, I'm thinking we could have some people go to MASB, some people go to Education Trust, and we share information, because I'm also interested in what happens at MASB, you know, good courses and, and good, you know, interaction with our colleagues across the state. Could we look at perhaps sending a couple one place and a couple another?
Reverend Hoskins?
I'm not sure how that worked before with the policy, but I know, as Dr. Baker was saying, if you had a combination of like staff or administrators and some school board members before, I think it was Dr. Taylor and President Muller, yourself, President Lanier, then you guys go to Washington. and some school board members before, I think it was Dr. Taylor and President Muller, yourself, President Lanier, then you guys go to Washington, what conference was that? I can't remember.
Oh, that's F R N.
F R N.
But I'm saying outside.
Outside of that.
Regardless, we still did something to, to pay for that, to go, or how, how did that work?
Well, that came through the I S D, I think, because that one, it was-
I don't remember.
Yeah, when I, when I attended, I went through the I S D, so I don't know the difference from when they went a few years back.
I'm not, I'm not sure, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
I don't remember changing the policy.
I don't remember changing the policy, though, if that's what you're asking, yeah.
Well, maybe we need to find out how that happened and go from there, that, that could be helpful.
Mr. O'Connor?
I think if there's consensus that it would be a worthwhile endeavor to attend the conference in Washington, D.C., I mean, it's as simple as suspending the rules to allow us to go, it's not, we don't have to change the policy or anything. It's just if, if it's the will of this body, that it would be a beneficial activity for our board to have some delegates there, then it's a very simple process for us to undertake.
Yeah, and I don't, I think going back to what Reverend Hoskins was saying, I don't even know if the suspension is necessary because of, you know.
Any other questions or comments?
So, then who would have interest?
Oh, Dr. Randles?
We did sort of put, uh, Ms. Neal, Lieutenant, on the spot, but do you have a few people in mind? If, I had sent it out earlier, too, before when I sent it to everyone, that there would be a possibility that you have a few that you could, or two that you could free up?
I did give it thought, because I looked at the registration, because I, I actually did a budget for if three of you went and then one or two staff members went from the nine thousand dollars, the budget, and the budget from the officer, the superintendent. But the Education Committee or the Academic Achievement Committee, I think it would be worthwhile to have a couple of people. Possibly one curriculum person, and then Carolyn Evans as the leader of that group to go, but to bring a curriculum person. I think it's going to be a great, a great conference. To attend, but definitely have a couple of people.
Good, good.
Sounds good.
So, who's, who's interested?
I'm interested.
There's three, yeah, so.
Who else is on our committee?
Who said Ms. Slade, who else was in, Dr. Randles?
And Wendy.
And then who would be interested in the M A S B? I'm actually in Jersey this time, so I'm not interested in either, actually, so.
Then they're the same time, right?
Right, around the same time.
One or the other.
It's about the same.
You said Detroit.
I'll go.
Eighth through eleventh is the M A S B, and then the other was, I think, the eighth and ninth.
I go to the exotic land of Detroit, Michigan.
You've already been to D.C.
Maybe I'll go ahead and hang with Raynard for the weekend. We'll hit some sessions.
Paying for you to hit some sessions.
I, I have to check, I have to check.
You'll have to check, but you're interested in that one if you do, because we'll have to vote on the delegates tonight.
I'm running a marathon on the fourth.
If, if nothing else, even if you may not go, we'll still vote for, you know, you as a delegate, just in case. Anyone else interested in M A S B?
I may be able to do, like, the Thursday, Friday.
Can I ask another, can I indicate something else?
No, we got our group.
I'm not going to, I just, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about Mr. O'Connor a minute. You need to have delegates be at that Thurs, isn't it the Thursday night meeting is my comment. I don't want to go to M A S B, Detroit and Washington, I just think, if you're going to-
I'm going to the Michigan game on Saturday, so I just want to make sure.
Just make sure you're at the delegate's meeting, so you can vote.
Do it again.
There's always a method.
So, um, the early bird special rate ends tomorrow for, so if we can have someone, register people tomorrow. That'll save us fifty, seventy-five bucks, something like that per person.
We're ready for tomorrow, I just needed the names.
Okay, um, so, great, we have that, so we'll need a motion then to approve the three, Mr. Ross, Dr. Baker, and Mr. O'Connor as the delegates for the M A S, M A S B.
Make a motion that Mr. Ross, Dr. Baker, and Mr. O'Connor be our delegates to the M A S B conference in Detroit.
And I support that. Motion?
Any discussion, comments, questions? Call the roll when you're ready.
Randles?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faub?
Yes.
Geetson, yes. Hoskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
President Lanier?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Any agenda items we can add to the list?
I just wanted to clarify that early bird pricing, or I don't know if it's pricing as well, but they did say the early bird sign up for the other conference is the eighteenth as well.
For the M A S B one?
No, for the-
The Washington.
The Washington.
Oh, that was the one I was speaking of, that's, that is tomorrow, yeah.
We'll do them both tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to have a discussion in the future, maybe at a, a work session about the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Any other? Um, public comment, I do have one card, if there are any other public comment on non-agenda items, please hold your card up, and we'll, someone will assist you. Mr. Helder?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I'm going to keep this fairly short. Suffice to say that, for the most part, the opening of the school year has gone very well. It's been a big improvement over years past, and I'm hearing a lot of positive things in a lot of buildings. That said, we still have what I call the usual suspects, you know, who continue to engage in the idea that our contract is a document to be ignored. I don't want to get into specifics of that tonight, but I do think we need to have, start having some conversations about whether or not everyone actually believes in that document and what administration, as the individuals who are acting on behalf of the board, what their role is in making sure that the contract is properly followed. Beyond that, I guess I've, I've been trying for the last couple of weeks off and on, because it's just been crazy. And I imagine, Superintendent Neal, it's been crazy for you, too. But we need to start sitting down again. Uh, we were doing that about, what, twice a month last year? Uh, and I think that there's a lot of the stuff that could be cleared up if we could do that. It may be helpful also to have Mickey or somebody from HR there, and possibly one of our UDs, and start doing some contract maintenance meetings. A lot of districts do that, it seems to make things run a lot smoother, you have far fewer grievances, arbitrations, lawsuits, everything else. Conversation's critical, it's relationships. It's part of why I was so surprised tonight to see Kelly Dean here, talking about the wonderful relationship he has with GRSPA. I can't speak for GRSPA, the GRSPA president's not here, Mr. Albrecht works a number of jobs, like many of my members. But I do know that Greg's never met him. They have no relationship. Likewise, the former president and Mr. Dean hated each other. In large part because Steve was the president during the privatization, and it was his members that lost their homes and everything else. We talk a lot about being honest and open and saying the hard truths, and being transparent and being accountable. So, I guess I would just like that entered into the record, that there seems to be a disparity between what was stated tonight by Mr. Dean and, you know, possibly what is the truth. And I don't know the answer to that, because again, Greg could not be with us tonight, I just know that they haven't met, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, you have any comments? No, um, no comments. Comment, okay, Dr. Baker?
No comments.
Dr. Fau?
Well, I just wanted to mention the pride of Grand Rapids Public Schools to have one of their graduates sworn in as a United States Attorney at Ottawa Hills High School. It was a very wonderful moment to see Patrick Miles sworn in, a Grand Rapids Public School graduate, his mother a teacher, and a proud moment for us.
Reverend Hoskins?
No comment.
None, Dr. Randles?
No comment.
Mr. Ross?
No, ma'am.
No comment?
No comment.
No comment either now. A little depression of not having any comment.
This meeting is adjourned, have a great evening, everyone.